Frank.
Called to all of the regular meeting of the John Day Planning Commission, November the twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five. Would you all please stand for a second?
My plan, ladies and gentlemen, by the United States of America. And we consider your project to be the best one nation underground. In the business of the vote with literally just for all.
Unfortunately, tonight, we have all members of the commission here. Um, the agenda, everyone have a copy of the agenda?
Sure.
There was some right there.
If that's even. Not by chance.
Okay, well, we've come to this point of having an amendment or accept the agenda that's written.
I have a question on the agenda. I just have a question on the agenda. If I can get clarification. Um, it does not state that the applicant will have time to address the new staff report. But will we be able to address?
Let's take that up in a few minutes. That's a good point. We'll get to that. Any, any amendments to the agenda? Motion to accept? I'll, I'll make it. There we go. A first, we have a second. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Everyone in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So now we come down to election of Chair and Vice Chair of the Planning Commission. Uh, I'm not sure how we want to proceed on this, but do we have any nominations for?
I would nominate Jim.
I will say for Chair.
Chair.
You can nominate.
Yeah.
Thank you. I move both nominations to be closed.
We need advice also.
Well, let's take Chair first, I guess. So. We have a nomination and a motion to close. All in favor of closing?
You can just nominate, you can just vote on the Chair.
I'm sorry, what Melissa?
You can just vote on the Chair. You don't have to do the formalities as a. Closing nominations or anything. You're not fifty people in the room.
I'm not sure I heard what she said, but.
You can just vote on you as the Chair.
Okay, so we have one nomination. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. No more.
Vice Chair. Need a motion over Vice Chair?
I nominate Neil.
Nominate Neil Ledgerwood. I move to close the.
I know where you live. And I could build a bomb.
Oh, no, no, no. I moved to close the nomination. See, I have got a call.
I know.
Well, a second for closure. One second. Yep, okay. So we have one candidate for Vice Chair. All in favor of Neil Ledgerwood? Aye, Neil.
That makes me Chairman and in charge of Vice.
However, you want to leave that role, you're okay. Um, okay, now it's a time for public comments and we won't allow like three minutes or so on any comment other than what's on the agenda. And do we have any public comments?
I don't, I don't know if this is the time to do it, but.
Is it part of your, is it part of your?
It's about the minutes.
Okay.
So they are on the agenda. So do you want me to do that now?
They are on the agenda.
So do you want me to wait, tell me you guys?
Please, yeah, please. Okay, so any public comments? Do we have anyone on Zoom, Melissa?
No.
Okay. Well, that was quick. Okay, so the consent agenda is the minutes of the October twenty-second meeting and that had been revised as of today. Did everyone get a chance to see the revision?
Yeah, so basically the revision, it was a little clunky. Um, so we just, we made it sort of float towards the end. The, the motions were all there. No worries. But we are not, we don't transcribe, we don't, we just put what's in there. So she gives a sentence or two about what's discussed and then the recording is always available. Um, and that's our official record. And so minutes are acknowledged basically in real life. Um, we, we make a motion to approve them, but they're acknowledged. So, um, we got the revised, that tells what happened. And then, um, I know Mindy had some comments, but, um, that is where we are.
Good. And then go, then go ahead with your comments.
Well, I guess I, I still didn't see on the revised with the motion and the path. On the, um, six-foot-tall fence, off-street parking and the bicycle parking is still not in there.
That's all part of what will be at the end of this one.
Even though it was voted on the, at the last.
It was consistent and agreed upon, but it's all part of the, the final motion tonight. The zone change, they actually did a, make a decision on, and that was in there.
Now those three, I'll take it careful, correct?
Yeah, but you'll normalize it tonight or when you make your motion.
Okay. Uh, do we have a motion to approve the agenda, the revised agenda?
I make a motion we approve the agenda.
Second, first and second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So now we're going again into EAPA two-five dash oh-one and understanding that we will be making a recommendation to move to council. We're not, we're not the final decision-making people here. So. Uh, I think we can turn it over to Henry for updates, can't we?
Sure. Thank you. Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, I do have a few slides again to share, so give me a minute. I just want to confirm that you can see my slides on your screen there?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so good evening. Uh, my name is Henry Hurley. Um, we're returning tonight for the Planning Commission to receive the additional evidence that the applicant submitted. Um, and your job tonight is to deliberate on that new information and to come to a recommendation that will be sent on to City Council. Uh, the, you, at the last meeting, you did close the public hearing, uh, so there's no more oral testimony. However, the app, the record remains open for written testimony. Um, and I also note that, uh, since this is going to City Council because it involves zone change, um, we're essentially doing this all over again, uh, in front of City Council. So the applicant will have, um, ample opportunity to submit additional written and oral testimony in front of the City Council before anything is final. Um, so I just wanted to highlight some updates from the last time you met. Um, the last time you met, you did recommend that the zone change be approved. Um, I'll highlight the additional evidence that the applicant submitted. Um, they submitted a written narrative. Uh, attachment A, uh, showing the proposed right-of-way for Third Street. Um, attachment A-one, uh, the existing right-of-way, uh, attachments B through D, uh, was information related to transportation and the TSP and the local street network plan. Attachment E was utility locate notes. Attachment F was the original construction agreement for Third Street. And attachment G is, was the landscape plan. Um, last time we left off, we had a lingering issue of number one of the right-of-way discrepancy and whose responsibility, uh, that was to address. Um, we still believe it's the applicant's responsibility. Um, we also, um, cite the applicant's attachment F. Um, it's principle number six, um, that upon acceptance of the road, the county will convey title and jurisdiction of this road segment to the city of John Day. Um, it appears that did never happen. Um, so if there's no right-of-way, uh, established, it's effectively zero feet wide. Uh, so we would submit that, um, that issue, uh, still lies with the applicant's responsibility. And I do have a revised condition, uh, related to that. Um, and this is it, the revised first condition. Um, the city also, um, is requiring that the right-of-way be a collector's street, option D, uh, and that is sixty-two feet in right-of-way width. Um, and the applicant may, um, you know, procure this issue any way that, that they deem acceptable. Um, and that the city, you know, accepts and the prior road legalization, uh, method, uh, seems that it would work perfectly. Um, so similar to your last meeting, there are a couple more things that we require the Planning Commission's review and decision on. Um, and those are noted here, um, and in your staff report. Um, the item four is the underground utility provision. Uh, item five is the fencing around the swale. Uh, item six is the landscape plan and then seven uh, is, um, staff, city rec, or asking the Planning Commission to appoint a designee of the Public Works Director. Um, and I added an eighth one on here. Um, and that is the deferred frontage improvements that we also discussed at the last meeting. Um, so the applicant did submit a landscape plan, um, during the open record submittal. Um, it is shown here. Um, as you saw in the staff report, um, I would recommend the, that the Planning Commission accept this landscape plan. Um, they submitted a plan that works best for their site. Um, and then from the city's stance, knowing that there is no minimum percentage for that zone, um, I think that's a, a good common ground for the city and the applicant to land on is to accept a set, a landscape plan that works for them, um, but knowing that the city's code does not talk about the minimum percentage required. Uh, this relates to the swale, uh, the fencing around the swales. Um, the previous meeting, the, the applicant contended, you know, where's the regulatory authority to require fencing? Um, we submit that it's in chapter five-three-two-zero-five-zero, uh, where it says the city may require installation of walls and/or fences as a condition of land use or development approval. Um, the applicant in the written narrative also cites similar swales around town, um, that do not have fencing. Um, I'll note those areas, um, are typically places where children are not present. Um, they cite Dollar General, Fire Hall and Bank of Houston, Oregon. Now, if, now it's, it's known that the stormwater design is not yet final. Um, and that the, the depth may change. So perhaps the Planning Commission might consider, um, upon final acceptance of that stormwater plan. Um, if the depth is three feet or less, the fencing would not be required. Uh, or if it's, uh, greater than three feet, then it would be required. So that's something the Planning Commission can consider. Um, this one relates to the deferred, uh, improvements. Uh, there was a lot of discussion about this at the last meeting. Uh, and the applicant, uh, addressed this quite heavily in their written narrative. Um, and the applicant cites, uh, conditions one and two as being present. Um, and thus a future guarantee, um, should be granted. Um, upon, you know, reconsideration and reading the applicant's narrative, um, and their arguments, um, I do think that they have a case for conditions one and two. Um, and the Planning Commission should consider, uh, whether or not that is the case. Um, and if so, uh, those improvements along Third Street would not be triggered, um, until a later date. Uh, they would not be required immediately upon site development. But this is, yes.
So I'm trying to look at the screen and paper here at the same time. What page are you on that, that you just showed? What, is that a page number on that screen?
Oh. Um, you mean a slide number or a page number in the packet?
He's doing a PowerPoint that he put together.
Okay, so it's not in here the same way.
Everything is addressed in your staff report. In fact, these, the, the the white box you see here is directly from the staff report. And if you want to follow along in the staff report, um, give me a second and I can tell you where I'm at. Uh, so the guarantee is discussed on page twelve of the staff report in your packet. And you'll see my lengthy response there and the applicant's, uh, response as well.
Okay.
And just let me know when you're ready to continue.
Randy, go ahead. Thank you.
Okay. Um, so like I was saying, um, conditions one and two, um, they may be met and that's something the Planning Commission can, should consider. Um, if they do find that the conditions one and two are met, um, the city can defer those improvements to a later time and they will not be required upon site development. Um, also, as I was talking about earlier, the underground utility exception. Um, the applicant, uh, is citing that they qualify for an exception. Um, and they, they cite the existing dev, development conditions make underground placement impractical. Um, it's staff's understanding that power will come from a nearby pole overhead and then once it reaches a property, it will grow underground. Um, also during, during our review, we also noticed the applicant may want to consider an ultimate location, uh, to receive power from. Um, there is an existing pole at Third and Elm. Um, just something to bring to their attention to see if that's, uh, a more practical way for them to, uh, put utilities underground. And this is something that, um, we will require the Planning Commission's, uh, discretion on, uh, whether or not to, um, grant this exception or to enforce the code as written. Um, also, um, at the last meeting and in the applicant's narrative, um, they addressed quite heavily, um, the fact that uh, the city manager was listed as the review and approval, uh, authority. Um, yes, the, the code does say Public Works Director. Um, as we know, the city does not currently have an acting Public Works Director. Um, so we would ask the Planning Commission to formally, uh, designate a des, uh, a designee of the Public Works Director and we would ask that that be, um, the city engineer. And this is not something that's foreign or made up. Um, I did look in your city, in John Day's charter. Um, and it does call for, um, a Public Works Director and/or their designee. Um, so I would ask that, um, the Planning Commission, in, in absence of a plan, uh, Public Works Director, um, the city engineer be the designee. Um, and related to that matter, um, the code says the, the matter, uh, the width for easements is determined by the Public Works Director. Um, if the city engineer is made that, um, authority, that designee, um, the city would, uh, like to see a twenty-foot-wide easement inside a fifteen-foot-wide easement, uh, for the sewer. Um, and then the last couple of slides, um, are the revisions to the conditions of approval. Um, as I talked about earlier, uh, condition one is relating to the dedication of the sixty-two feet of right-of-way, um, consistent with the collector's street option D. Um, you'll see the previous one here is crossed out, um, and I made sure to indicate that this is a revised condition. Uh, condition two, two is entirely wiped out. Um, that one was met at the last meeting. Uh, we addressed that concern. Um, uh, condition three, uh, remains as-is. Um, condition four. Um, this is the deferment of the frontage improvements. Um, if the, if the Planning Commission, uh, recommends that those be deferred, um, the city would require a law, um, a waiver of remonstrance, um, to guarantee those, uh, improvements in the future. Uh, and going back, you'll see five, six, um, are, are gone. Seven is just to revise the parking sheet to show the curb, curb length, um, meets the code and that should be a pretty easy fix. Um, condition. Yes?
Keep going, Henry.
Okay, uh, condition eight um, has been, uh, removed. Condition nine is revised, um, and that is for the final water and sewer plan, um, to be reviewed during construction permit review. Um, related to that, uh, condition ten, final stormwater plan, um, shall be reviewed by the Public Works Director or their designee. Um, and then eleven, um, has been revised and this is, uh, regarding the underground utilities, um, that they shall be placed underground consistent with, uh, the code requirement. However, if the Planning Commission decides, um, that there's an exception that exists, um, this one would potentially go away as well. Um, uh, revised condition twelve, um, the portion of the sewer, um, that does not lie in the right-of-way should be placed in the easement. And this is the one where the city is recommending twenty feet wide instead of fifteen. Um, revised condition thirteen. Um, the applicant noted this only applies to public improvements and we revised that condition to reflect that. Um, and fourteen and fifteen are gone because, uh, this would, these would not come into play, um, if the improvements are deferred along the frontage. Uh, sixteen, uh, is the fence around the swale. Uh, we left that one as-is. Uh, however, this is a point of contention, uh, that the Planning Commission will have to discuss tonight. Um, if they revise it or remove it or keep it, um, we can adjust that as-is in front of the City Council meeting. And then, um, just two other informational items, they're not conditions, just to make the applicant aware. Um, there are additional comments, um, in attachment B from the city engineer's memo. Um, and the second one is that, uh, the site is in the floodplain and does require a floodplain permit. Um, and those standards to get a floodplain permit, you know, have recently changed, um, due to FEMA's, um, change in regulations requiring, uh, no net loss of habitat. Um, but that, the floodplain permit can be reviewed, uh, and approved, you know, post-land use review and approval. Uh, so I do, uh, we do recommend that the Planning Commission, uh, forward a recommendation, recommendation of approval onto the City Council, um, with the conditions noted, um, in the staff report. Um, and then, as I noted earlier, there are several issues that we are looking for the Planning Commission's direction on. And for a refresher, I put them up here again so you can refer to them. And that's all I have. I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, so at the previous meeting, we closed the hearing, we left the record open. Now we have to open the hearing again. Is that correct? No?
No, you're in deliberations.
No, yeah. Um, yeah, the, the hearing is closed to oral testimony. So i- if the applicant was seeking to provide oral testimony tonight, um, unfortunately, the hearing is closed. However, the Planning Commission can reopen it. I don't recommend that, uh, because you already closed it at the previous meeting. Um, and like I said at the outset of this staff report, um, we're doing this all over again in front of the City Council.
So I know the applicant would like to make some testimony here, but since we are going to be only moving things to City Council, perhaps we should leave that up to Council. And she could make her remarks there. Is that appropriate, Henry?
If I, if I understood right, um, if the applicant has more information or new information to submit, uh, they can absolutely do that in front of City Council and, um, that, that's, it's a clean record essentially when you get to City Council. Everything that happened in front of the Planning Commission is carried forth to the City Council and then some. There's opportunity for new testimony, new evidence in front of the City Council at their hearing, uh, I think in December or January.
So I can't even comment that there is ORS one-nine-seven-point-seven-nine-seven?
Mindy, you can't, because they closed the hearing and they didn't publish it as a, as an additional testimony. But you can't, Council.
The applicant has had an opportunity to submit prior to this meeting tonight, right?
Yep. Yes, um, the applicant submitted, it's all in your packet, you know, a robust, um, rebuttal of pretty much everything, you know, staff presented last time. Um, uh, that, yeah, they submitted that on the thirtieth or thirty-first.
Well, you went through a long list of things we need to be looking at. So, uh, can you pop up there on the screen?
Yeah, let me see if I can make it bigger.
Who should consider?
Um, so let's just start with, um, the first one, the underground utility provision and, uh, just so you can see, I'll go back to that slide. It might help you debate that one. Um, so the applicant, um, it's my, it's, it's staff's understanding that the, the power will come from a nearby, uh, overhead pole. Um, and that once it reaches a property, it will go underground. However, the code standard is all the utility lines, um, shall be placed underground. Um, unless there's an exception, um, the exception that the applicant citing and seeking, um, is existing development conditions make it, uh, impractical. And they cited, um, fencing in the way, um, disturbance to, you know, adjacent properties. Um, it's, it's all in your packet, the, the details of that. A- and again, I'll note, so the Planning Commission's role here is to make recommendations. Um, the, your, your recommendation is carried forth to the City Council that will take final action. So your recommendation may be accepted or rejected or revised at the City Council. So what, what you decide tonight i- is not final, it's just a recommendation.
So maybe we should just kind of open that up to the commission here in terms of the options are above ground or below ground and, uh, I think the applicant has stated a position on that. So do we have a recommendation we want to make to Council?
Are we talking about inside the park? Or above or below ground? Or is where is it still gonna be?
Is Trish online? Trish? Do you have any more information to add about the electric utilities underground versus overhead? And Trish is, uh, city engineer, uh, part of staff?
I am on and I don't have any extra information to add now.
Okay.
So Trish is a city engineer for John Day?
Country, yeah.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Part of the Dyer partnership.
Yeah, Dyer is the engineer of record, not me personally, but Dyer is.
Okay, I got it, got it.
So if I understand, it possibly could come from Elm Street?
Well, I mean, myself and the city engineer noticed that, um, you know, just prior to publishing the staff report, and I don't think the applicant may not have looked at that. Um, and we just recommend, we just advised, you know, it's something that they may want to consider. Um, I don't know the feasibility of it. We just noticed it and brought it to their attention.
What?
Bringing the power from Elm Street along Third.
Above ground at that point and then going down. Okay.
So in terms of construction, we're talking about the, the actual lots to put the campers on and we're talking about fencing and the swell and all that. Uh, would the utilities have to come in before all those things were done?
They would come in at the same time. It's part of site development.
Yeah. Okay. The argument.
You can't operate the RV park without, you know, your electricity and your sewer and your water line hook-up set everyone would expect when they go to an RV park.
Yeah, I, I was just thinking about the applicant's concerned about if it's underground and that's going to disrupt all the fencing and all that, but.
Yeah, a- and that's, that's the part that's, you know, outside of the property. A- as in their plans, once it, once the lines reach the property line, they are going underground. It's just the areas outside of the property to get power to the property.
Is there any? Any question as to how many poles if they do start on Elm Street? How many poles it will take to get to the property?
No, we, we haven't really evaluated that. Um, that possibility. We just noticed it and wanted to, you know, bring it to the applicant's attention that maybe that's something they could look at ahead of the City Council meeting. Um, but, but, but no, we haven't really evaluated that at all.
Well, or is it an option to go underground is what I was wondering from Elm, because you're not crossing a street. Is that correct? You're not tearing up a street?
Yeah, that's, yes, so.
Is the pole on the left side of Third? That's what the little red box is telling me. So you would cross Third Street?
Yes. Coming from the fairgrounds.
Coming from, yeah.
But not from, not from Elm. If you were going from Elm, you'd be on the sound side of Third.
I'll pull up the applicant's written narrative. That'll show, um, their argument on this, this issue. And this is all in the record and all in your staff, in your packet. Uh, I just need to find it. Uh, so utilities. Yeah, so the applicant calls out that I did not talk about the exception, um, last time at the meeting. Um, they do, the code does allow for, um, an exception. I mean, they feel it applies. Um they do, the code does allow for um an exception. I mean, they feel it applies. Uh so in, in this case, the rodeo ground fences, access and the paved Third Street make that impractical. Um so they would have to, um I suspect trench through Third Street um to get lines across that. Yeah, it says right here, underground also required trench cutting through the existing street. Um the entire area is already supplied with overhead power lines.
Henry, from an engineering perspective, this is a floodplain. Would there be any extra issues if it were underground?
I don't have an answer for you off the top of my head. Um we haven't really dug into the floodplain regulations at all yet. Uh but I do know the, um I believe they did mention somewhere in their plans that the utilities are elevated um a foot above B F E. But I, I, I don't know for certain.
There's already carples in the area, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I personally don't see any reason to put it underground until it gets to the property, to be honest. When Kerry Lyons bought that.
Yeah. So.
Above. He used iron, he used chunks of concrete. You don't know what's in that bill. Underground isn't going to be real pretty, no. And any Kevin Campbell water from it.
So it, it does say in their application, um utilities will be one foot above B F E, which is in line with floodplain regulations. So is there a discussion on um permitting that exception is what I hear? There's a pathway for that?
In my opinion, I think so.
Yeah. Or are we still talking the same thing?
Yeah.
Overhead to the property and then underground, okay.
It's kind of a fixed situation.
Yeah.
Probably the cheapest way to go.
Oh, yeah. So I see a lot of idd noggin. Do we have consensus on that?
I, I move that we make the exception to allow overhead to the property and then underground from there in a second.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second?
I guess I did that right.
Oh, we head to the property and underground when we get to the property. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay, I got that one. Um and that, yeah, that's essentially their proposal here. I, I highlighted the last sentence of their narrative. Um, okay, so that one's taken care of. Let's go on to the next one. Oh, the fencing around Swale A. Um I'll go to the slide for that one. This is it right here. And also note, um this is uh regulated in the O dot uh Hydraulics Manual. Um and we do cite it here as, as another uh regulatory piece uh for requiring fencing. Um but like I said, if, if the, the stormwater plan, you know, is not final, it may change. Perhaps um that's where the planning commission, you know, leans is to see what that final depth is. Um and if it's, you know, three feet or less, then the fencing's not required. And if it's, but if it's over, then it would be required. That's, that's maybe your common ground on this one.
How many swales are on the proposal? One or two?
Henry, did you hear that?
So how many swales are proposed?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I pulled up the plans real quick unless Trish knows off the top of her head. Um there were a couple.
Three or four. The others were much shallower.
Yeah, I think it was like A, B, C and D. There, there's a few.
Are any of them going to be mowable? Or has anyone even looked at that yet? Because as far as I'm concerned, if you fencing is kind of dependent on the slope, the idea is to keep people out of the swale. And if the, if it's, if there's any vertical in it, yes, you gotta fence it. But if there's, if the slope is really steep and you get in there, you can still climb back out if the slope allows. So it's kind of a depends on what you're trying, how much water you're trying to store. You know, how big is this whale? Maybe you can make a giant swale that never gets deeper than three feet and you don't have to fence it.
So the applicant's made an argument that there are other swales in the community. None of which have a fence around them. And the annual precipitation here is like twelve inches. Now that is a flood zone, but um we're talking about three swales and fences around three swales.
Just the one swale is what's in question.
This is, this is a swell A we're talking about, isn't it? Yeah.
So.
Larger.
So I, just so you're, uh, you know, always aware of, you know, the applicant's side of things, this is their argument um regarding the fencing. Um and like I said, they, you know, they hit us for not providing any um code citation uh which we rectified. Um but yeah, this, you can see here on your screen, this is their argument. And as I said, they call out other swales that exist. Um the Bank of Houston, Oregon, Dollar General parking lot and John Day Fire Fire Hall's frontage. Uh and they consider it an unnecessary condition of approval.
And the biggest issue that the applicant has proposed is the danger of children.
Uh but I think that's, that's the city's stance. It's a safety measure.
Yeah, it's right, right.
It's not the applicant's concern, that's a city's concern.
Yeah. The applicant's stance is it's not a big deal. Uh this is just like you would find anywhere else in John Day.
Any comments?
Well, I'm, I agree with Chris. I mean, I mean, if there's a slope, which if I remember reading it, it did say there was a slope that was easily, would be easily walked out of.
Well, that's why I asked the mobile question. Because you, it, it, over a certain steepness, you can't mow anymore. If you make your swales where you can run a riding mower down in and out, and I cannot remember exactly what it is, but it's three to one or four to one. You know, it's fairly gentle.
Uh Trish, do you have any um thing to, to add for the, the the slopes of the swales?
Not at this time. The final design is still in progress as per the applicant. Um, the reason that we wanted the commission to consider this is because of the presence of small children on the site.
But you said earlier, that's a study that has not been completed that might be a, a factor in this regard, right?
That's correct, that's.
Yeah.
Yep, that's kind of what I have written on your screen here.
Well, that could easily, although we have multiple positions on that, could easily be deferred to the city council one that, once that further study is completed.
Yeah, I mean, it, it can be, I wouldn't say deferred. Uh I think you should, the planning commission should still make a recommendation on this one. Um and the city council can consider it. But if you meant deferred as in, we'll wait and see what the final plan says, I think that's acceptable.
Yeah, that, that's what I was speaking of in terms of, we don't have information because that study hadn't been completed, so maybe between now and city council, it might be available. So I don't think we can make much of a decision.
But would the planning commission say if it's uh three feet or greater, the fence would be triggered? I think that's what we're kind of trying to get at in, in this case.
You're starting your design from, you know, day one. It's not that hard to keep it three feet or less.
Shall.
You may have to make it a little bigger. It all depends on how much, what is your storage? What is your, you know? What kind of an event are you trying to store, you know? And let's face it, if it floods down there, the swale's useless anyway. You know, if the river comes up.
The river's running across this.
Yeah, it's, the swale's useless, so. I mean, I, I don't know, I, I, I think that from a design standpoint, it's not that difficult to keep it at three feet or less. So no offense. I mean, that's how I see it.
I would agree.
I agree. Say that again, Chris.
That, from a, we don't, there, there's this study that we're talking about. And then, you know, there's not like any kind of final design, obviously. But if that goes in, if, if the main swale, if A, I assume that's the main swale. Um, it's not hard to design the swale to not be any deeper than three feet. You know, you can still meet your capacity requirements. You'd, like I said, you may have to make the swale twenty feet bigger in each direction or something, but you know, you're trying to store a set amount of water, a target amount of water. And if it's three feet, no offense. You know?
If it's three feet or less, no offense.
Yeah, yeah.
Three feet or less, no offense. I got that.
Yeah.
You got a motion from Chris?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
That was just.
Need to require the applicant to engineer it to where you don't need a fence.
Okay, we have a, a motion in a second that if it's three feet or less, no offense.
Perfect.
Uh, aye, aye.
What's next? Oh, uh, item six, um, it's my opinion, this one should be pretty straightforward. Um it's approving their landscape plan. Um in their narrative, you know, they wrote allow us to design a landscape plan that works for us, um given that, you know, John Day does not have a prescribed minimum percentage of landscaping. Um and I, I think that's fine. So the planning commission is being asked to basically approve uh their landscape design, which is here on your screen and.
I, I knew that we. You've got it, you, you're making a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve their landscape plan.
I'll second that. I wrote a motion in a second to approve the applicant's uh landscape plan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect. Uh, number seven, um, this is, you know, given that John Day doesn't have a public works director currently, um and the charter does allow for a designee. Staff would um suggest that the planning commission appoint the city engineer as that designee.
I have one question. Does this create a conflict of interest if an, an engineer does all the design work and then checks their own design?
They're not doing all the design work.
Oh, okay. All right, that answered my question.
They have their own engineer, yeah.
Yep, the, the city engineer, um it works for Dyer Partnership was, which is completely separate from um the engineer that the applicant is using.
Okay. Well, I, I would move that we support the designation of a city engineer for those decisions. Okay, motion in a second. All in favor?
All aye.
Okay, moving right along. Um, oh, and number eight, um this one uh gets at the deferred frontage improvements. Um I'll go back to that one. Um so the applicant, you know, at the last um meeting, um they provided oral testimony that uh there's no sidewalk above or below this site. Um it would be segmented, um potentially even more hazardous, um than not allowing the sidewalk. Um and I'll go to their argument here so you can see it in its entirety. Uh so yeah, number four. They list, you know, they, they cite the John Day uh Lupo Street Network Plan um that sidewalks are included um on that portion of street uh in the plan, although it's low priority. The city never pursued its own independent funding uh for sidewalks along Third. Um, so I think the important thing to note here is um they're not opposed to, you know, providing those, those improvements um in the future. Uh they just feel that they should not be required immediately upon site development. Um and they also note, um you know, getting at the pedestrian safety aspect of it, um they will be adding a crosswalk um at the site that connects to the opposite side of the road and the existing shore network. So um this condition um is revised and it's written um in the, in the affirmative in that the planning commission would um grant um a future guarantee uh to defer those improvements.
I would agree with that.
Yeah.
The revised conditions of, of the approval to, for them to defer it until it's triggered.
Until the city builds.
So you're saying no sidewalk now, but down the road maybe?
Right, yeah. No, well, down.
Down the road.
Yeah. And that would be, so the, it gets a little um kind of convoluted um when you're dealing with a public entity, you know, such as Grant Colony um with a local improvement district. That may not be the best avenue to actually, you know, encapsulate this. Um so I would just leave it open that one option to address this is a waiver of remonstrance. Um but a much more simpler way to address it might be just an I G A, an intergovernmental agreement between the city and the county. Just kind of outlining uh the terms of this. Um so I would ask that you just leave it open to um, you know, an avenue to be decided as to how this is actually you know, memorialized for the future. It could be a waiver or it could be an I G A. And we'll bring this up to the city council too for their awareness and get their feedback on it as well.
He's recommending that you leave it open?
Didn't we leave it open?
Either one.
Well, I just recommend, I'm just kind of making the planning commission aware, um the this is not a, a one size fits all approach with the local improvement district. Uh there might be more effective ways in dealing with this kind of issue when you have two governmental properties, two public properties that are in the local improvement district. This is usually um, you know, written for uh a private property, but in this case, we're dealing with a public property and a um the county. So it is a little different. But the, the point is um through either mechanism, um the, the improvements will be deferred um until the future. But they will be guaranteed um and, and be put in eventually. That, that's the point uh to take away from this.
So we are deferring?
I think you're approving revised condition number four.
And that's what you said, isn't it ours?
So what, what would uh I C A be completed?
Oh gosh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
When would a I G A be completed or another form of?
So, yep, uh the great question. Um so that would be probably one of the first things that we do after the city council, you know, makes its final decision. Um that would be one of the things that uh the applicant and the city could, you know, work on immediately.
Okay. I'm hearing some mumbling over there. We have a, some comments. I'm sorry, Linda.
Oh, just, just for them and the, for the, the applicants and the city to figure out the timeline. With the county, county is also involved, right? So it's, it's, that's why Henry's saying it's kind of complicated because there's several entities involved in roads. Right?
Yes, yes, you're right.
Yeah, it is a little more uh complicated in that you're dealing with two public entities. Um it's usually a private property that this would apply to, um although it does still apply to public properties, we did research that. Um but the, the local improvement district might not be the best mechanism. That's why I mentioned perhaps an I G A.
But either way, it, we're, it defers the action.
Correct. That's the, probably the important takeaway. Uh either way.
Not requiring them to build.
That's correct, that's correct.
I'll make a motion.
Your motion, what, what is your motion?
I don't even know.
That's what I was.
Well, I, I would just, perhaps to accept revised condition of approval number four Well, I would just, perhaps to accept revised condition of approval number four. Um, with the understanding that, um, you know, staff and and applicant shall work towards, um. Either, yeah, in in a good, in agreement acceptable to both parties, um. You know. That um defers us to the future, but also requires it um upon triggering, so. Probably just accept revised condition of approval number four. Um, yeah.
Okay, that's my motion, that we accept the revised conditions.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion on that one? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good day.
Oh, that was it, that's perfect. Um, I I'm gonna open it up to Trish. Did I miss anything? I know you and I have worked a lot on this in the past few weeks. Is there something, anything I missed that that you caught?
No, I think we covered it. Thank you.
Okay, um, so I guess, um, related to item seven, um, since you did recommend, um, to appoint. Uh, dire engineering as a city engineer, um, we will uh like to see that twenty foot sewer easement. Um, instead of the fifteen. Um, and I, so I think that's it, so. Um, the planning commission um decided or made recommendations on all the items on the screen. Um. And if you just give me a minute, I'll I'll go through them to make sure that I captured your recommendation correctly. Uh, so on the underground utility provision, um, the planning commission decided that there is an exception present. Um, and that the applicant's proposal um to go overhead and then underground at the property is acceptable. Uh, the swale, the fencing around the swale, um, depending on the final design. Um, if it is three feet or less, no fence. Um, and then the planning commission accepted the applicant's landscape plan. Uh, the planning commission um appointed um dire engineering as the designee to the public works director. And the planning commission um deferred the frontage improvements um to a to a later date. Um, via an I G A or a waiver or other some or 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 some other mechanism um to be determined.
Did did Henry capture all that accurately, the way we decided?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I captured it, so. Um. Well, so you you, the planning commission made motions um and passed or. Made motions and passed them as we went through these, so I I I think you're done. I think you did what you needed to to do.
Henry, you need to make a final motion to recommend to council.
Yeah, so yeah, that's, we should do that. Let's make a final uh motion to um recommend approval. Um, onto the city council. As. As amended. Yeah, with amended conditions um and recommendations decided tonight. And if I can write one for you if you give me ten seconds or so and put on your screen.
Please do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion of what? Apparently, did you see this in the in the packet? There's a picture of a scooter man.
Yeah, but still, the lights run down all the path, that's not right.
We didn't talk, okay.
It's on property.
On.
Uh, just very, wanna get my new glasses on for you too.
We can ask him.
They're coming from the V A and until Congress.
Well, there you go.
No, 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 no.
Yeah. Twenty foot there.
No, 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 no.
The contractor. Okay. So this is an existing.
Okay, so this should capture up um both of your previous meetings, um. You're recommending site design uh approval onto the city council. You've already recommended approval of the zone change. Um, your recommendation is contingent upon the revised condi- conditions contained in the revised staff report. Um, and also the planning commission's recommendations on those items one through eight. Um, the previous ones, um, were already handled on the twenty second, um, and then the other five were decided tonight. And I'll I'll have a discussion of each of those um in the staff report that goes to the city council, and it'll have your recommendation made clear.
So are we comfortable with what Henry just listed that we accomplished tonight, and that would be moved on to council?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor of that?
Well, you need a motion.
I need a motion that we recommend approval onto the city council for P A P A twenty five dash one. To the site design review with the revised conditions as contained in the revised staff report. And as planning commissioners' recommendations on items one through eight. As discussed on October twenty second and November twelfth.
Nice.
That was a motion?
Yep.
I'll second that motion.
He already did.
No, I'm mumbling, no, I'm mumbling. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good.
Okay, excellent job tonight. Um, this is why cities have planning commissions to, you know, decide and debate these very issues, so I applaud you tonight. Nicely done.
Is it a minute?
I move to adjourn in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh.
So do we have any other matters coming forth in the next months or so, or do you know?
Not off the top of my head, um. I think we've been in front of you, you know, quite a bit these past few months. I think this is kind of the end of the the stuff we've had waiting in the queue.
Uh, that that was discussed in several months ago, I believe, about setting a standard or a date. Date for us to meet. Is that something we should be discussing at some point in time?
Yeah, um, the planning commission could put that on uh a future agenda, um, and you could meet just to discuss that.
Let's get to January.
Good point. We're gonna, we're gonna put that to the side right now, and after the holidays, we need to put that on the agenda.
Perfect, okay.
Upper scheduling.
And we do have the code revision that they'll be involved in on the back end a little bit, right?
Oh, so that's a great reminder, and thank you for bringing that up. Um, I'm sure the planning commission will be involved in some aspect, um, with. A respect to revision to the city's development code with respect to housing. Um, a lot of, you know, state laws are changing, um. Uh, their standards related to housing, uh, the city uh is looking at getting a grant uh to complete that work. Um, and that would be a project that would be done by a third party consultant, uh Cascadia Group. Um, and myself and Melissa would act as the advisors on that project, but they would be be doing the majority of the work. Um, and I'm sure they would.
Let me clarify for them, Henry, because I'm getting a lot of like looks, um, we we don't have a choice. This was told to us, so it's not like the city went out and we're like gonna get a third party come in and read it. We we are, we have to, we're we're not, our code is. So deficient that the state has taken notice and they. They said, we will give you money, but you're gonna do this. So it's not like we went out there and said, we want a third party, we're gonna spend this money in this brand. Um, they're giving us money to fix our code. We have to go with a third party consultant. You guys will all be involved, Henry will be involved. Um, but I just want that to be made clear, so it doesn't get out there. The timeframe next year?
Uh, yeah, probably early next year, and it's probably, you know, a six to eight month project or so.
Yeah.
This is zoning code?
This is, it might have some zoning component. I'm not sure what exactly the scope's gonna be.
Yeah, the scope, I mean, the scope is directed at um clear, objective housing standards. Um, and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're, um, we were chosen. So, uh, there you go.
In fact, I think I think they said John Day is the first to go through.
Yeah, I think they said you're going to do this. Um, and so just want you to know when it gets out there, we, this is not some of the city went out and tried to. Do, uh, we are doing it, whether we like it or not. And so, uh, yeah, you'll all be involved in that. And actually, it'd be helpful, because right now our code is really difficult, and somebody wants to develop, as you can see. It it needs to be more clear on what's required and what's not. Um, this is actually gonna be.
Do we have any idea of what the states actually working on?
Are they clear and objective?
Development.
Yeah, it's a a recent House bill that came through uh Salem. Um, a- all housing, you know, standards must be clear and objective, um, and. Every city is struggling with this and every county really, um, and it's even in the courts as to what is considered clear and objective. So.
So you'll be involved. Alright. Alright, thanks, Henry, appreciate it. Thanks, uh, Trish.
Okay, bye.
Bye.
Thank you.
Good night.